Call the meeting to order and ask that you join us in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. Thanks for joining us for a meeting tonight. This is a combination virtual and in-person meeting, and we do have a number of people that have joined us virtually by Zoom, and they're able to speak as well as everybody here will when those time come. We're glad we're finally meeting where we can get more people in the room and we don't have to be quite as conscious about masks. It's up to you when you move around the room. If you feel more comfortable wearing one, you certainly can. If you're comfortable not doing so, that's okay as well. There was an agenda posted on the website along with instructions on how to join by either video or phone or in person. The meeting is being recorded. It'll be available on our township website, as will written minutes, once they're approved by the board. There will be two opportunities for public comment, virtual or in person. After being recognized by the chair, we would ask you, if you're in person, to come to the microphone, speak closely to the microphone so those on Zoom can hear you. And if you're participating by Zoom, you kind of wave your hand, or I think you have a button where you can do that to get Todd's attention. He will make sure that you get recognized as well. Todd will be monitoring video and knows how many people are participating and who might want to be recognized. With that, we'll do self-introductions of the board. We'll start with Dave.
Dave Bruce.
Art Rutledge.
Todd Brown.
Jeff Reynolds.
And we have with us by Zoom.
Jeff Rogers.
Good. Can you hear us okay, Jeff?
Yes, fine.
Good, good. Also, to my left, we have Todd Ziegler, the Township Manager. And in person, for once, for a long, long time, we have our Solicitor, Tim Bupp. Good to see your smiling face again. And by video, we have Wendy Brown, our Recording Secretary. With that, we will go to our agenda. First item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from our May 5 meeting. Are there questions or comments on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 5.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any further comments or questions? All right, then we shall vote on the matter. We'll start with Dave, I guess.
Aye.
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 Jeff, thank you. Five votes to the affirmative. The minutes are accepted and approved. We will move to the Treasurers' Report. Are there questions or comments on the Treasurers' Report from anyone?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurers' Report for the month of May. Any further comments? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. The Treasurers' Report is approved. We've come to our first opportunity for public comment. We would note that that's limited to five minutes a speaker. And are there people here who would like to address the board at this time? Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry? No, not really, if you want to address the board. Can you come up to the microphone? If you can speak pretty close to it so that they can hear you.
My name is Monica Houston. I live on 12015 McDonald Court in Glenrock. This pertains to the proposed text amendment for the group home. And I wanted to just elaborate a little bit. I know the water issue was brought up in various meetings.
If I, if I can just make one caution.
Yes, sir.
And that this really is not where we would want to talk about site-specific issues, but just the ordinance.
I didn't know that.
That's okay. But just kind of to clarify, I probably should have done that in the beginning. That any site-specific issue would be after an ordinance was done and somebody came to us and wanted that use, and then all those things would come into play. But as a general ordinance, those site issues wouldn't, wouldn't apply. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, though. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Dave, you deserve the right to speak with me in this specific issue.
Yes, yes, yes. We would, we would certainly allow that if you would prefer to wait till we get to it. Yep. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, we have Ben Dinkle with York County Planning.
You're right. Thank you. Then it's all yours. You're up.
Thank you. My name is Ben Dinkle, and I'm a transportation planner with the York County Planning Commission. And right now, we're in the public comment period for Go York 2045, our 2021 to 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It covers all things transportation in all of York County, and it can be viewed at goyork2045.com. You could view the plan and take the survey from there. That's really all I have for you. I encourage all of you guys to take the survey and leave some comments and, and review the plan.
How long does it open for comment?
Oh, it closes on June 9.
Okay. Todd, did you get?
And the survey should take about five minutes.
Yeah, Ben, I was going to ask, is that survey, that's open to all York County residents, correct?
Yeah, yeah, even outside York County residents. Anybody that travels through York County is welcome to take the survey.
I just wondered how to share the link through our social media.
Okay.
Yeah, if you go to the York County Planning Commission Facebook page, you'll find several posts about it that you can share directly from there that are linked to the survey.
Okay.
So, thank you for your time.
Questions from anybody about the survey while Ben is there?
Yep.
Well, thank you very much for joining us. We, we appreciate you.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? And we will move ahead with the agenda, and we move right to proposed text amendment for group home. Maybe if I can make a comment to get started. We have a good deal of information that probably was not available previously in reports from our attorney. They were not available to the Planning Commission when they met. We had some additional information, I think, from York County. And it would seem to me like, well, I'd like to get this one done. It's really the purvey of the staff and the Planning Commission to present to us kind of an ordinance to review. And it appears like we may well have to do some more work to make sure we are in full compliance with federal regulations. And I guess that's the main thing I think we want to do is make sure that what we come up with meets the law. I don't think we're sure it does at this point in time. Comments from the board?
I feel the same way.
I'm in agreement.
I like the idea, what Tim said, it says, this, you know, what the staff came up with looks like a good deal except for.
And a couple of those need to be talked about, yeah.
So, staff can meet with the Planning Commission?
Staff would meet among the staff and pass along.
That's correct. The board directs, staff prepare a draft, which we would then.
Submit to the Planning Commission.
The Township Planning Commission.
To make recommendations.
And then they would, you make a recommendation based on that onto the board supervisors.
It may help, just for everybody here, staff, it consists of our Township Manager, Todd Ziegler, our Township Engineer, who's a contracted person, our zoning officer, who's also a contracted company, a member of the York County Planning Commission. And I guess that's pretty much. That's right. And also, one of our Township member, employees now, who was a member of the York County Planning Commission, and I believe is a new Freedoms Planning Commissioner today, too. But based on her past knowledge, she sits in on those as well. So is there a motion to that effect?
I would make a motion to that effect. That we pass it on to staff and they make recommendations to our planning.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second that we would ask the planning staff and to prepare a draft ordinance with the best effort everybody can give it to make sure it complies with all federal regulations and law. And then we would ask the Planning Commission to review that, and again, keeping in mind the same thing, that we're looking for something that will withstand the test of both time and federal regulations.
And just to clarify, that's to make sure that we're compliant with the Federal Fair Housing Act?
Yes, correct.
Yeah. And with the, the potential issue with that act was that our ordinance was too restrictive?
Yes.
All right.
So, we had a motion. Do we have a second, Todd?
Yes.
Yes, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment from the board? And we'll go ahead and vote. The vote is to return this back to the staff to draft an ordinance, then to the Planning Commission to review it.
Yeah.
Which is required by the Pennsylvania Code anyway, if there are changes made.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We will move that back and then try to get that moving forward as quick as we can. We have a second proposed text amendment that's been worked on this regards of commercial solar generating. I believe our Solicitor, who's made some suggestions, is actually going to spend two days in a seminar dedicated to this. One day.
Too exciting.
Two exciting days.
I'm sure.
So I would propose that it makes sense for us to.
Wait until those two exciting days.
Right. Wait till the Solicitor comes down with his excitement and may have something that we would add before we would move that forward.
So we're going to table that until next month?
That's, that's what I would recommend, but we need a motion.
Yeah, I would motion to table the solar discussion until July's meeting.
We have a motion and a second that we would just table the proposed text amendment for commercial solar generating until our next meeting. Further comments? We'll vote.
Aye.
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 All right, five votes for the affirmative. We will move that off until next, next week's agenda and enlightened Solicitor. We have one more where we've been working on ordinance amendments, and that's the sign ordinance. And I guess, Todd, maybe a little update on where we are on that.
Yeah, if you recall, this all came about with political seasons, when we had particular properties where we signed, see the current rate that we had on our ordinance. We threw that and we threw hearings for citations that the District Court. And through that process, then dealing with the property and the attorney and also the power, so forth, the whole, our sign order. It appears that there may be some issues with free speech, with limited signs, signs, so forth. So basically, what we've done, I laid it out there to see, everything you can see on the yellow sheet. Yep. That's what's in our current ordinance as far as temporary signs and table. And that's what we're proposing, we can read that and it's in parity, and it's pretty much good work. Table, simple, yeah. And basically, what it does is all temporary signs, regardless of the use, what zoning district, would be the same sign as political signs. The only difference is that political signs have no time limitations. And that's been, I believe, determined by the courts. You can't regulate the time periods which is to be placed. Other than that, size, bumper, locations, everything else, very great, that all would apply to political signs as you do all other signs.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Solicitor.
You wrote, made a legal statement with the time group. Simple is good. When it comes to something like this, we want to limit the amount of restrictions we put on size, political speech, so as much as we can, because it is a constitutional issue.
Right.
There's a huge body of law.
How are we differentiating between political and all other, like if it's for a candidate, it's political? If it's for an event, it's not?
Correct. Political speech, commercial, everything is commercial.
I make a motion to approve.
We actually need to advertise.
It said that's clear.
Plane.
If this is not, if it was zoning, or if it was a subdivision or anything, and then it wasn't there to plan. This is the standard ordinance. So it does not go to plan, but if the board's comfortable with this.
You have to advertise.
You authorize it, yeah. Took me three tries, but I got, I got it. I would then make a motion to advertise this, so that we can move through.
I'll second you.
We have a motion and a second, and I sense that our Solicitor is comfortable with the wording as it exists. So are there any further questions from the board? And we'll vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative. We will approve this to be advertised. That's what we voted to do. And then that will come forth for a public hearing, correct?
Right.
And then?
Advertise that for the July.
Okay, so be the next meeting. Okay. Okay, we have Southern York County School District. This is looking at some modification requests or approval or reverse subdivision and land development plan.
Hello, I'm just.
The floor is yours.
Just, just by, for the Davis Hall Association, here on behalf of the school district. As stated, this is for the Southern York County School District campus. It's on Pissens Church Road. It contains the high school, there's a high school.
Is there a particular sheet you want?
Um, probably, if you could do the overall. Yeah, that one there, probably, Todd, would be good. Good, that one there should be okay, I think. It contains existing high school, middle school, and elementary school. And what we're doing with this, there's actually two plans associated with this. The first one is a reverse subdivision plan to join. There is, the campus is actually on four separate tax map parcels. So we're joining them all in the one contiguous parcel. Pretty simple plan. The second part is the land development plan, and with that, we're putting a building addition on the northern side of the high school. They're tearing down part of the existing high school in this area here and creating a new parking lot. There's a new parking lot going down here, one behind the football stadium, another one in here. And then this access drive that goes up to the north there is actually going to be removed. We're putting a new access drive down through here to create a safer location. It's up, up here on that curve, it's hard to see. They can only really, they actually have a restriction on it, so they're going to use this so it has better sight distance and everything. And then they'll actually have a bus loop that'll be able to come around and serve all those schools in one kind of motion. So that's the gist of the plan. Basically, we're to the point now, we have the comments addressed except for our pendant highway occupancy permit and erosion and sediment control plan and NPS approval. We are requesting three modifications, the first being proceeding with a final plan without doing a preliminary plan. The second one is for street trees along the entire property frontage. We are proposing in this area here, can't quite see it on this plan. There's, there's a space where there is no existing trees. We're proposing two new trees here. You can see there's already existing trees there. We're not proposing any along this area here because that's where the existing stormwater basin is, and it's pretty much is right up against the right of way, so we don't want to put trees on that embankment and endanger that embankment. But then after you get past the stormwater basin, this whole area is already a wooded area on either side of that, that proposed access drive. So that's the reason for a modification request for that one. And then, Todd, if you could go down to the bottom of the drawing there. Our last modification request has to do with this property line here with, that's adjacent to the existing development there. What we're proposing there, it calls for a buffer yard. What we're proposing is to add 10 evergreen trees around this area here, where you can see it's adjacent to whatever we're proposing there. And then we'll be actually adding landscaping along this part of the parking lot there and up in here to shield them from a joint property. The other thing I can say is this lower parking lot, the school district is not planning to have that used at nighttime at all. They're going to have it as daytime parking. Kind of more for, mostly for this field here, if they have any daytime activities that they need.
Are they lighting that?
No, they're not going to light that area there. So that's, that's pretty much the gist of the plan and our modification requests. I think there was two other questions that were brought up at the Planning Commission. One was, Todd, if you could back up to that top area. When this driveway is taken out, we are proposing just to put that back in grass, and there was a question about why we're not going to plant that in trees. Their, their existing sanitary sewer service actually runs right through that driveway. They also have their underground electric and communications run through a duckback that runs through that driveway. So we're just proposing to keep it as grass. That way they can access those in the future and not have, you know, not have trees in the way of them.
And that, that wasn't really a, a modification issue?
No, just a question.
It was a question and a request from the Planning Commission.
Correct, correct, and then there was.
Chair, if that could be considered.
Yes, and then his other question was also on the trees, whether the school has considered having anybody come out and look at them. And they did actually have somebody out a couple of years ago and evaluated it, and there, the person told them they probably owe it about five more years before they come out and start doing some understory clearing to make sure that those existing trees stay healthy. So the school already does have that on their radar. So we're basically here just asking for the motions on the modification request and conditional approval on the plan.
Well, we have two things we need to look at, and we should look at the modifications first. And that would be if we're in agreement with the Planning Commission that recommends that they all be approved. And if someone on the board would like to make a motion toward that.
Can I add, what do you ask if we were white?
Okay. Can't hear me either? Okay. Okay. All right. Are we better now? Hopefully. Are there any questions from anybody on the board? I should ask first.
Well, I just had one question. I know in the past, we had trouble with excess water running on a couple of neighbors. Do I see all these parking lots going in there? That could be addressed to them?
Yeah, that's been, yes, that's been addressed. I think the major issue is going to the west, and there actually isn't any water. There's no change going to the west.
Down to the southwestern, they very got flooded out.
Yeah, yeah.
And years ago, the one right down the bottom, go over.
Yeah, that, we're going to, we have to comply with all the new regulations. We have, we have seepage pits in for these upper parking lots, the lower parking lots. And there's another seepage pit going in here. There's one going in up here, and all, all but two of them are designed for 100-year storms. And then, and then we will be using, of course, the existing basin for some of it also.
We're lunch downhill, so.
And I can say, with all this that's going on here in the middle part, there, there actually, because of all the existing impervious that was on, was already there, there isn't, wasn't a real big increase in, in the middle part of the, of the, of the campus with, with new impervious, just because there was already a lot there. The school's actually, the addition's actually built on that parking lots that kind of sits behind the school, so.
Other questions from the board? Somebody like to make a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the three modifications as they've been requested.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in two seconds, so we should be ready to vote. Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, so the modifications are approved. And the next thing we need to do is approve this, the reverse subdivision. I guess that's the right language, but again, taking four lots and putting them into one, which seems to make sense.
I make a motion to approve the reverse subdivision for the how many lots? It would be, or the motion would want, yeah, and that puts a land development, it's all on plan.
Yes.
And to approve the land development.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reverse subdivision and the plans.
If I may just add, for Dave, you made a second, on the condition that they need all of the comments of the C.S. Davidson letter. Dave, Dave, April 30th of 2021, so can you include, so.
Thank you for that reminder, because we do need to include that. All right, so we have a motion, those who second agree to the clarification with this C.S. Davidson letter. I assume so, so we need to vote yet.
Aye.
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 Five votes for the affirmative, so we have approved the reverse subdivision and land development plan as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the power, James Powers and Karen Almane, East Tona Road and Peeny Sunset Lane. And I think this is just looking at modification requests, correct?
Yes, yes. We're requesting three modifications.
I guess just to be official, we know who you are, but.
Phil Robinson, Amanda Lane.
Thank you.
We have a request for three modifications that we submitted. One was not to require curbs. One was not to require the widening of the road by two foot. And the third was not to require sidewalks. Staff. Voted against all three, and the planning board did also. But we still think we have a really strong case. We, we did pull back the one on sidewalks. We're willing to retract that waiver and we'll put sidewalks in. I think it's going to be a little tough because of how things work out there, and I think it would make a lot more sense to have a sidewalk on the other side of the road where it's flat. But just to try to work through things, we're willing to let the sidewalks, pull the sidewalk waiver out of the requests. The other two waivers, we feel really strong about them. I think I brought some, the, Todd, can you bring up the, the tax map? Have you found me? While he's doing it, I could just make a comment. One of the concerns was maintenance. And I was really surprised at that because I thought that an open swale would be a lot less maintenance than curbs. And I'd actually mentioned that at Strawberry Fields, I thought that worked well. Todd made a comment that there was a real major maintenance problem with that. So I drove out the next day to look at it, and I went on the west side of the road where I had done all the construction. And I actually took some photographs, and I thought it looked great, and I didn't see how that could be a maintenance problem. Then I drove on the east side of the road where I didn't do the construction, where SNA Homes did it. And they didn't build it to the plan. The plan didn't have any pipes in it. There weren't supposed to be any pipes in that. There were supposed to be open swales. I never realized that happened. I don't know how it got past inspection, but it shouldn't have, and, and I don't see how you can maintain it. The pipes are lower than the swell, and I just don't see how it's maintainable. I'm going to bring up some photos. The photo I just gave you is an example of the swell on the west side of Strawberry Fields, and that's how they all are. It's really gentle swell, mowable. There's a little dip in the driveway and the water flows through. If you try to put a pipe in that, it will not work. I guarantee it won't work because the pipe's going to lay lower than the swell. It's going to fill up mud, and it's going to be a real maintenance problem. So that was. So that was when I found that out, I could understand why staff would have thought that was a maintenance issue. But that's not the way these would be done. The way these would be done are just the way that that photograph shows where you just have a gentle swell, which is also the way it is all along this whole road. And in fact, this whole neighborhood has that same swell system. So if if we put curbs here, it would be the only place in the whole neighborhood, across the street it does in the neighborhood, that was developed with curbs and everything. But in this existing development, Keeney Sunset and everything, this would be the only place that would be curbs. And I brought another photograph, but I don't think I have five copies.
We can share.
Yep, we'll we'll share.
Yes. That's the parking ride or not parking ride, but the rabbit transit?
That's that's Rabbit Transit. And there we did put curbs in and widen the road. And that's what this would look like just in front of these four homes. You'd see the curb, you'd see the widening of the road, but then it would change right back to the swales that are out there through the rest of the neighborhood. And in this, in in the parking ride or the Rabbit Transit, it made perfect sense because that whole property is going to be developed. And when it's developed, everything would be curbs and everything would be that wider road. In this neighborhood, can you paint out some, Todd, a little bit more than just a all through here is the curbs and swales in this whole neighborhood. So it would only be this area right through here that would look like that. And I don't believe that the rest of this will ever be curved. It's a fully developed. So it doesn't make sense to come back in here and put curbs in a system that's working. Why spend the money to do that when you've got an existing neighborhood that's been working for probably forty or fifty years? So we still feel really strong that the curbs and the widening of the road is a mistake through this area. We think it's gonna look just like that that looks at the parking ride, but it's never gonna have all the other parts of that neighborhood brought up to that same situation. And the last thing, you know, the open swales are really the best management practices right out of the manual. I mean, there's stormwater manual for the state suggests that you do open swales, grass swales, so the water can it can go into it. That's that's pretty much my discussion. If someone has a question.
And that's a good point. It it would force the water further down the road until it finds an area that doesn't have a curve or will we be putting in?
Right here. Right here, you're gonna have a real problem. We have curbs here and right here is a big swell. All around here swales. There's nowhere else that it's curbs. So I don't know how you're going to to blend that all together. Now, you do have curbs. You know, there's a great, see the swell? I mean, our curbs would start right there. We'd widen the road back and start right there when we can have what's there right now, an existing swell in the driveway. This grade, this hump here can be cut down, and we can make that a nice gentle swell going up, just like it is down the street. If if you back up again, Todd, that was really great.
It it wouldn't have the the ditch that's sort of formed there now.
No, it'd be more like this open swell. And if we didn't do that, you can imagine that curb would be in here. You'd widen the road two foot, put the curb in there, and you'd go from this transition to that. And then after you're past the property, you transposition back to the curb. So.
Do we have storm drains on that road?
Right there is one. Right there is one. And and that will have to be worked into the swell, and we can clean that up and make it work. The driveways, there's an existing driveway here to the existing home. The curb, the down through here, those driveways would be great. Here, we're gonna have to cut some of this hump off so the water still flows there, but we can do all that with grading. This seems pretty deep in the ground right there.
And that's that's a drain.
That's a drain. It's piped under the ground, but we can do some grading through there and make all that work. And when it's done, it won't be a two foot wider road with a concrete curb. It'd be the same swell that's through the whole area. And if you go in to the townhouse project across the street, there are curbs there, and I understand that. But it was developed all one time with those curbs. It wasn't an infill where you're coming back in an existing neighborhood and putting curbs in.
I I I think, Phil, it's it's easier for me to say it doesn't seem to make sense to widen the road because it's a short strip.
Should I have like three feet tops for what we're talking about?
Probably a little bit more, three hundred foot you widen the road, yeah.
Okay. What what makes it a little more difficult with curbs is I know our engineers feel strong about that. And I'm not an expert. I guess to some degree, I kind of think I need to lean on our engineers.
One thing, if I can just add from staff and staff talk about it. You know, we don't dispute that grass swales work and it's more stormwater management. As Phil mentioned, you know, here's a good example, there's a swell, uh, comes down the street here. This property starts in the back of here. And you can see it comes down and it catches a pipe, but it looks like it goes across the road here. Where our question, our concern is first of all, we we all know how how are you gonna handle the stormwater coming down the driveways? Because these are slope tunnels.
Well, we propose that the stormwater would be handled individually on each lot, so we'd have to do something like a
So you put some drains at the bottom of each driveway?
No, no.
Then where did the water, the next question.
You can set the same way we've been doing all the other driveways, we've been doing in situations like this, slope the driveway to the to a ditch that's along the side and stone, not a ditch, but a infiltration trench.
Uh, then if I can just continue, there'll be two driveways, additional driveways come off the tongue, correct?
Three. Oh, two off the tongue.
Two additional.
Yeah.
You're going to create an intersection. You know, as you can see, there's a little bit of a swell here, but not not much. Continue down the street here a little bit, we get Keeney Sunset. You know, one question we had, and part of the problem is we haven't seen a plan for stormwater management. So, you know, maybe they have something that we could address some of them, but we haven't seen that.
Right, understood.
So stormwater coming down driveways, um, you know, you can see here, and if you're out in person, you'll see a little bit. I mean, they have stormwater runoff here that causes some washout. And the question is, if water's coming down two new driveways and there's uh, water coming down the swell, where is it going now? As it is now, it comes across the intersection. So are we going to be adding more impervious area? This is just without a stormwater plan, it's really hard for staff to support this request. And then here again, it would be two driveways, correct, coming off of a Keeney Sunset.
Right.
And again, depending on how the stormwater is managed for driveways, um, you know, we could end up with some water out here on the street. And of course, it comes down here. There's no pipe running down this road. Then I know there's water runs down through here, Phil. I'm sure you probably see this too.
Sure does.
It's blurry there, but you know, we we got a washout here. So I I think staff, I don't think they had too much of an issue with not widening it necessarily, but we do, I believe, think that curb probably is required to help manage the stormwater.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, how in the world is a curb gonna handle stormwater? You have to infiltrate, you have to put the water in the ground, you have to put it somewhere. If you put a curb there, all you're doing is channeling the water down that curb. So the stormwater would be an infiltration trench, infiltration for the building, all those sorts of things. But a curb isn't gonna manage stormwater. A curb's gonna direct water down the street.
Well, the thing is, we haven't seen any stormwater plans. See how stormwater is gonna be managed? Just as the development that has gone up in Tona, there's storm inlets along the road. Until we see that, you know, staff stands by at least the curb and the sidewalks.
But but Todd, again, the curb doesn't infiltrate any water. All it does is send the water down the road.
You're right, Phil, but we do not know yet. I mean, uh, do you need to put any stormwater along the road? Is it clear on the other?
I don't think you need to put stormwater inlets in. The only the only purpose for the inlets at the other development are the direct water into the pit. There's a big pit, fifty or twenty-five by twenty-five by five foot deep. I've made it clear that I know that there's gonna have to be pits on this job, just like there are pits there. Whether you put a pit at the end of the driveway or you put a pit along the driveway, somewhere you're gonna have to infiltrate the stormwater. Curbs are not gonna do anything about that. And and I've always agreed that, yes, there has to be a stormwater plan done. And what it will happen is it will infiltrate the water in the ground. It won't send the water down the street.
I have two two things. Where we were just looking before, the storm drain is further up the road than it it, and I don't think it's gonna catch the majority of the driveways we were looking at. So where where is the water that would be coming off of there, going across the roadway? To, in this picture, below residential heights. Where is that water going to be captured? I mean, i- is it just gonna funnel it down the road with the with the curbs and then across the road? Or do we have another drain, storm drain, that's gonna catch what's what's flowing down there?
The only problem with storm drains is you have to drain them somewhere, and there's nowhere to send it to. I can't put a storm drain here and send it to their basin. Can't do that.
Yeah, it's gonna be as well.
So I I I absolutely am sure I'm gonna have to infiltrate the water. I'm gonna have to put it in the ground. And we've agreed that's what we'll do is put the water in the ground. And if if we need to make a bigger pit, if we do, if if in fact we had to put a storm drain at one of these swales and pipe it back to a bigger pit, I agree. We, that's not a problem. But curbs are not gonna solve that problem, stormwater.
I I'm sympathetic to no curves. Because it then allows the water to run off of the impervious surface and enter the grass. But I I do agree that staff needs to see uh, oh, um, help me, Todd, what's the word I'm looking for?
Man, I think we need the plan.
Exactly. So so I I I think we could move to approve not widening the road. And like I said, I'm sympathetic to not doing curves, but we need to see the stormwater plan uh, before we can make that variance.
I'm not asking for a plan approval. That's where my whole problem is. I'm not here for a plan approval. My plan approval, I'll show how the stormwater is gonna be handled. I'm asking to not do curbs which aren't gonna handle any stormwater and not widen the road. If we don't do that, we'll show you how we're gonna handle stormwater.
And if you don't, you'll put the curb again.
I don't think the curb's gonna solve the problem.
Well, I'm saying, if you can't prove
Yeah.
to the engineer that it's gonna solve it.
Well, we'll do what we have to do.
If I could, and this is one reason that staff feels that it needs to be curved. The project that was done at Tona Mount Gary, it's kind of hard to see here. Um, we didn't require any curbs. We waived that. We have the the storm inlets here, and they're not the best functioning storm inlets, Phil. I think you'll admit that.
I was just, I was just gonna mention.
We have the, we have the swales, the ground cells around them. If you have a curb, you know, there's asphalt along that curb, it's gonna capture that water, it's gonna do the job. That's, that's where staff is going.
To do this, this pipe, this box has to be out in the road. Would you agree with that?
Correct.
Okay, and the curb's gonna be back here. And what this does right now is it it's piped back to a big pit at this other end. And I was just gonna mention that this is really a terrible picture because this was taken, I don't know what the date is on this, twenty nineteen. But I went by here this morning and I thought, how great that looks. This is all good green grass now, and I think it's functioning great. You know, back in twenty nineteen, the grass hadn't come in full blown yet and some other stuff. But I and I didn't take a picture of this when I showed up, what it looks like today.
The grass is green. I don't dispute that. The grass is very green. I guarantee you, if you get out and you walk around this basin, the basin's higher than the finished grain around it. There's no water hanging there. And when you see about the curb in here, if where a curb would have been required, the curb would have been back here, not out. There wouldn't be a grass swell.
We'd be widening the road.
Right.
And this would be in the widening of the road, pretty more impervious area, and the curbs would be directing the water like that. I understand that. I just know that I'm amazed that your engineer doesn't support what's in the best management practice manual. Everyone's looking for ways to cut down, sending the water where it doesn't belong. And these grass swales are one of the things right out of the manual. And one thing that isn't in the manual is putting curbs in. But that's what we're getting proposed to do. I I'm really feel strong against that. I really do. It's not, it's not just be, you know what, this this is probably twenty-five grand. And if we had to do it, it's not gonna make or break the project. But I truly feel strong, it's the wrong way to do it. And just to have curbs for that three hundred foot, I don't see how you're gonna ever make that work unless you curb that whole street. I I guarantee you, there's a way to get stormwater in the ground and infiltrate it. But to put curbs on three hundred foot of road and nowhere else in the whole area, I just think it's a total mistake.
Just a reminder, everything uphill is captured by this stormwater right here. So we're talking about curbing and capturing a lot of the road and potentially from the driveways from this point down and Keeney Sunset.
And again, where where would where would the curves funnel down to, Todd? Down down the road or across the street?
So storm inlet, and as Phil said, they they could infiltrate that, but you'd be able to capture it. Yeah, but we'd be capturing the water off the road, Todd. That curb isn't gonna take any water from those driveways or anywhere else. We'd be, we'd be channeling the water on the road into somewhere different than it is now. I I just don't get it. If I have a driveway here and I can put an infiltration trench along the side of the driveway and slope it, you know, sixteenth of an inch or a half inch to the foot, I'm gonna sh- send that water right in that infiltration trench along the driveway. And that's more typically the way to do it. I'm not trying to catch all the water coming down this road, and that's all that that curb's gonna do is it's gonna channel the water that's coming down its existing road. It's not gonna take the water off of the driveway.
So with with, let me just ask, with the driveway, you would actually taper it up a little bit to create a?
No, what what I'm saying with taper is, as you're going up, it's tapered to one side, and the infiltration trench is all along that whole length of this driveway. So the water comes on and slopes off and flows into the trench with the whole length of it. Maybe the last fifteen foot or so would be something different. You can put an infiltration trench right at the very end of the driveway.
It's gonna be great if you run off the side of the driveway, not straight down.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
All right. I have a motion. Bear with me.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the waiver request for not widening the road and not installing curbs, provided that staff sees and agrees with a stormwater plan for the project. And if that doesn't happen, we reserve the right to withdraw the waiver request for the curves.
I'll second.
Well, you have to see a stormwater plan anyway. We can't, I mean, that's part of the requirement to approve the project. I I think maybe what what we might be thinking more is have to prove that it can be handled without putting curbs in.
Yes.
One way or another, you have to show us you're gonna handle the stormwater.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I don't understand how curbs are gonna handle stormwater. But I I I won't fight the issue.
I, if the solicitor can speak on this. I'm not sure I'm comfortable as far as staff with that motion, only because if I understood you correctly, that staff sees it. I'm not sure what the determining factor is there.
That staff agrees that the water from those generated from those driveways is handled in an appropriate manner.
Let me throw this out. If that's if that's the case, because it's this body, the board that makes that final determination, I would suggest maybe the motion be to table action on this until we see it. Because I think it means it's too open-ended. Because I think there needs to be a final determination from the board, one way or the other. Because I think there needs to be a final determination from the board, one way or the other. And I think that motion, in my opinion, I think kind of means it's open-ended. But that's.
Well, I kind of think that, I kind of think the developer needs a, you know, along the way, needs to know one way or the other too, because you can't design it both ways.
Well, my situation is I know that curbs are not going to help stormwater. I'm sure of that. So I don't understand that whole theory. If the ideal is you like it to look different than it does on Tonnell Road where you've got an inlet structure and a curb. But what is that doing? It's not catching the water. It's taking water off the road, for God's sakes. It's not taking the water out of driveways. The only thing we're adding are driveways and houses. We're not building a new street. So all we need to do is handle the stormwater and what we're adding to the plan. And there's no way in the world curbs are going to help the stormwater for most driveways and those houses. Infiltration trenches will. You know, I don't know what to say.
Which I, I, like I said, I'm, I believe them. I, I don't know that the curbs are their responsibility, but all it's doing is taking water from the road and generating it to where it's supposed to go.
Sending it somewhere where, where, where am I going to?
You're responsible for the water that falls on those lots.
Right.
And as long as you're handling that in a responsible manner, I, I, that's right.
You know, the ordinance does, and can require a developer to make improvements to the roadway, which they apply.
Which we, which we say, in our opinion, that's the whole reason behind this. We don't think it makes sense to make improvements to the roadway. We don't think it makes sense to change the roadway. We are all in support of handling the stormwater that our projects generate. And curbs are not going to do anything. I, you know, I took it to my engineer and said, what, what do we do with this? And he looked at me and said, Phil, what am I going to do with it? What am I going to send the stormwater to? How do I do this? Send it backwards to, to infiltrate? Well, then what I'm doing is sending the stormwater from the existing road and the existing swales back on the property infiltrated. That's all I can do with curbs. You understand the science behind what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I hear, I hear what you're saying. But you didn't convince staff, you didn't convince our engineer. And I guess the, the issue I have, Phil, is I don't know. You're, you're better at this than I am, and so is our engineer. But we, you know, how do I discount what our engineer is telling us? I'm not saying you're not without, you know, certainly some credibility in what you're saying. I can't say our engineers are without credibility either. And I don't have any credibility in saying how you get rid of stormwater.
Is, is there any way that we can move forward in a less vague manner for, for you two?
Why, why can't the motion be made, if the board's in agreement to grant the waiver or the modification for widening, and deny at this point in time, so it's official, the request for curbing? And he went through the sidewalks. Because curbing, if it needs to be added later, that can be added much easier in your design than having to, to, to work and manipulate widening later.
If you don't waive the curbing, then I got to take that stormwater off the road and send it somewhere. Where do I send it to, Todd? How do I do that? Do I take it back on the property and infiltrate it? I'll ask your engineer that question. I've asked my engineer that.
About the Tonne.
Tonne, all that's about is the exist, the new road we built. And we caught what was coming off of the property and it's sent back into a big pit inside the property.
How many inlets are home down here?
I believe there's two in, there's two at each end of the new driveway and one up at the corner.
Right.
And all three of them are piped together and piped back into the property on a pit that's 25 foot by 25 foot by five foot deep. I can send you a picture of it.
Right. I know, and I understand, and I agree with that.
So if I put curbs in and inlet structures, where am I going to send that water to? I'm going to send it there. On, on Tonne, the two that are beside the new road, there's a swale there and the water comes down. The new road goes into those inlets and then is piped into the pit. That's a different, you know, we can do the same thing here. We can put some sort of small inlet at the end of the driveway and swale. And the water that comes down the driveway is piped back in. But to put a curb out on the street, then I've got a real issue. I've got to find out, how am I going to get that water somewhere? Which, why in the world would we do that for 300 foot of frontage when there's nowhere else on that whole neighborhood that's got curbs?
I just feel more comfortable if I had Jeff look at it, he made a recommendation, you know, to modify it. But if he don't want to modify it, I touch his judgment. I wouldn't give a waiver or make a mod.
I don't want, I, I'd rather not have any motion at all right now. We'll go back to staff.
All right. We will wait for that to come back to us then. We did have a motion on the floor though.
Which was seconded.
And it was seconded. So we either need to vote on it or have it withdrawn.
If I may.
Yes.
Thank you.
It, it is the board that makes the motions and decides what they're going to do, not Phil.
Okay.
But again, if I may, I'm, I'm just trying to understand it from a legal standpoint, because I ain't no engineer, right?
Agreed.
Mr. Bros is correct to say that. Mr. Robinson agrees. He's got to control the water on the plan that he's proposing. It seemed to me that what you wanted to grant a modification for is widening the road and the curb. If the plan will show that the plan has developed, the property has developed, is going to control all stormwater.
Correct.
I think that's what you were saying.
That, that is a, a good summary of, of what I.
I mean, I respect it, because that's a, that's a math thing. That's an engineer thing. I've created this much impervious, there's this much slope, I need to have this much basin or whatever stormwater controls are going to be required to control. Sounds like I understand from staff that they are rather insistent that they want, they do not want to see the modification to remove the widening and the curb. That's what a modification is. And it's you five members that decide whether or not you want to grant a modification. And at that point, staff will say, we told them not to, but that's what they want to see, that's what they want to see.
If, if the motion is what Dave proposed, that it's, the modifications granted. And, but I don't remember how you said it, Tim, but I have to show that I'm handling the stormwater, our stormwater.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that.
Correct.
I figured it that, that's what you were driving at.
That's what I want. Because if I put the curb in, I can't fix it. I know it's a problem. I know I'm going to be dealing with everybody's water in the whole area.
Yeah. I mean, the improvements that you're putting on are the new houses and the driveway.
Exactly right.
And the widening of the road and the curb, if that is required.
Right.
Right. And you would rather not have the widening of the road and curb, because that creates more stormwater that you've got to control somehow.
Right. And it also can, it also makes it a lot tougher to do something with it, because it's out in front of the property.
Exactly. I'm just describing the problem. I'm not saying go this way or that.
I agree. So, but thank you for summarizing what I had said. So that's, that was my motion. I think Jeff Rogers seconded it from CyberStates.
I stand with the second.
So to clarify, what, what your motion is, is that the board would approve the two modifications. And you've withdrawn the one for the sidewalk, so it's two. On the condition that the developer would be able to demonstrate that he was adequately handling stormwater without a curb or widening the road.
I'd rather say that I'm handling my, the stormwater that I'm generating.
Correct.
It's your motion, okay.
Yeah, that's, that, that is the, the essence of what I was motioning. Thank you.
And Jeff, you've seconded that as we just stated?
That's the essence of what I was seconding.
Okay. So we have a motion. There is a second. Are there any other questions before we vote? Or discussion? We shall vote. Aye.
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 We have four votes affirmative, one negative, so the motion carries. And Phil has to do some demonstrating.
We'll do it. I'll, I'll handle the stormwater.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is, I think this is just a reapproval for the Keller Darby Final Land Development Plan that expired.
Correct.
The other two.
Reauthorization of the conditional approvals.
Pretty, pretty standard to do that.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We've extended that for another time period. Uh, I'm moving, are still under subdivision and land development. We have a bond reduction request for Hamilton's overhaul. And it has been recommended by our engineer, Jeff Schu, that after inspecting, that we approve that reduction. Correct, Todd?
That's correct. The net draw on that bond would be $1,769,006.50, leaving a remaining balance of security of $1,5,780,000.
I'll make a motion to reduce the bond.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reduce the bond. Any further discussion? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative. We've approved the bond reduction. We have several reports. We typically start with the managers. Any questions, comments? Or Todd, do you want to add anything first?
Not other than the text my book app. We have our meeting next month should be up and live, so.
Outstanding.
Get some information out to everybody once that happens.
Uh, that's going to be on the website. I'm assuming it's going to be in the newsletter for the.
Correct.
Summer, fall.
Well, I just got word that they took the newsletter to the post office, I think, yesterday.
So the fall?
Yes, in September.
Very good.
Uh, you took advantage of 11 of the PSTAT's virtual conference training. So that's great to see too. Any questions from managers' report? It was nice to see the solicitor here in person. We've received written report from him. I don't know if there's anything he would like to add or say.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the zoning officer and code enforcement, sewage enforcement report. Any questions or comments on that from the board?
Anything else to add since the report was completed last week? For the Hammond property, for our group, we did receive a check that was in escrow for fines, penalties, and court costs of $5,499.50.
What was that in reference to?
This was the middle of August, June of 2018.
Wow, that's a movement.
Failure to get a zoning permit.
Ah, okay.
And there is an additional $2,881 that's due for a defendant. As you know, this is before the Court of Complains. There was a hearing held in April. The defendants did not appear. So there's contempt of court judgment against them. So the solicitor's office, Steve McDowell is handling it for us. And he's rushed to ask the judge to set a deadline for that balance. We also received.
And what's, what's the cost of the building permit?
$100.
Why? Jeez. So this could be like $7,000. That just going, I mean, he violated the ordinance by not getting a permit, but we gave him the option to come back. And he's still, after all this is done, still won't have the permit.
To this day, the township has never received a letter, an email, a telephone call, asking a question or complaining. No, no communication at all with the township.
Now, th- this says that the judge ordered the release of the 549950 CGA had been holding. Where did that come from?
That came from the Hammond's. I don't know if you recall, we were at a point where we were a settlement. And that's what they owed the township in legal costs and fines. And there was a settlement agreement that they paid a amount and secured a $100 zoning permit.
Okay.
They just had to sign the agreement.
And they never did.
And their attorney said that they never were coming to sign it. To this day, they haven't come in to sign it. And they have not applied for it.
Go ahead, you got another one you were going to talk about.
Then the, we also did get a payment today from Gem Craft Homes for sign violations, right? It's $1,200,000, who they did pay.
I hope they sold a few houses to pay for it.
Before the marketing budget.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Any questions from anybody on that report? We have the maintenance department project list and the park maintenance. Any questions or comments from the board?
It's not necessarily as far as maintenance, but where are we with Phase Two of Miller, Miller Park? I know we're, we had the matching grant.
Yeah, we awarded contracts, we're working on the plan documents and bid documents.
Okay.
They may have heard something this month, we'll be happy with it. So I'm hoping next month that we should hear something and hopefully authorize it, that out for bid.
Towards the end of the summer? Okay. All right. So we think it should be completed this year? Very good.
Any other questions? All right, we have the engineers' report. Pretty self-explanatory, unless somebody has questions. And I did see Stan on the, he's still with us? Stan, anything you'd like to speak to us about under emergency management?
First of all, good evening to everyone. And as of this week, the York County Emergency Operations Center is standing down from its COVID operations. We are back to numbers that we have not seen since March of 2020. So the pandemic is winding down. You're probably all aware that most of the meeting restrictions and social distancing mandates from the state have expired. The exception being the mask mandate, which will expire no later than June 28th. And so we should be seeing a rapid return to, to normal life.
And that's good, for sure.
I'll be, I'll be preparing an after-action report for all the member municipalities. We are excited by New Freedom Borough voting to join Schema. And we'll be making some adjustments to the emergency operation plan to accommodate any of their special circumstances.
That's good news too, great.
Thank you.
Anything else? Good to see you.
Stan, I have a question for you.
He's muted, I think.
Go ahead.
Stan, this is Bob. I have a question for you. When we build the new administrative building and we, we put your headquarters in there, are you going to need some type of a tower or any, any antennas?
Yeah, so I met with Todd and the engineers on a Zoom call. And then we also actually had a face-to-face at, at the existing EOC with, with one of the engineering company. So yeah, we're going to be looking to have a tower. And that was what the meeting was all about, was where, where to put the tower. And I'm working with Todd now to get the specifications for a tower. Thank you.
Any other questions for Stan? All right, we move on. You have the Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board report. And then we, of course, added to our agenda now the committees. We have three of those. I would note that we've added the citizen representative to the official map committee. That's Kathy Raymeyer. And we have added the citizen representative Ben Butler to the sewer committee. And I think both of those committees will be meeting later this month, I think. And the American Rescue Plan, we're kind of still collecting the latest information, which changes every week. Yeah, you're right. Probably every day. The solicitor is helping keep us up to date on that, so is PSATs and a number of notes that we get. So Todd, I don't know if you want to add anything on committees, but we continue to meet and move along with those. That would lead us to supervisors' comments. I would just note that we did have the initial sewer committee meeting this month chaired by Dave. We had that on the 6th of May. Attended a May 14th, the second PSAT's Town Hall meeting on the American Rescue Plan Act funding. Our Township PC meeting this month, and on the 25th of May, the LGAC, where I'm part of the Repurposing and Restructuring Committee, where trying to look at how we make that group more effective and more responsive and get more interest in it. Attended yesterday's staff meeting. And like Todd, I was able to attend a number of online workshops through PSATs, not as many as he did. But I attended one on building public trust in local government, one on recent developments in cellular antenna regulations, one on how to best select revitalization strategies for your community, and one on grid-scale solar overview for local government officials. And I have some others I will go back and do. They're recorded, so if you've paid your fee, they're available, I think, for the rest of the year. Are there any other comments from supervisors? Hearing none, we will move on to old business and we'll go to Todd for, I think, some good news.
Yeah, next month you will see Baltimore Street on your job. We did receive, as you know, there was a lien that we executed for not paying for sewer for two properties which were owned by the same party. 11790 Baltimore Street and 1182 Baltimore Street, James Getz. Through the assistance and leadership of Solicitor Buck's office, we finally came to getting that payment in full for both properties was $35,273.81. So the sewer connection tapping fees for both of those properties, including late fees, crew interest and so forth, legal fees, attorney fees, sheriff fees, is all included in that amount, so it's all been paid in full. It was closed.
And then that goes into the sewer fund?
This actually goes in, that's, this is District Two, so that actually goes into the general.
Oh, okay. So that's where we have the general obligation?
The sewer fund is District One. That's the general obligation.
Okay.
So the balance of sewer project in District Two, which is Pleasant Valley, where we're shooting Baltimore Street, they're in court. We, substantial amount of that project was through block grant funding, the balance, the township finance through its general.
Okay, so then it just goes back into the general fund. Okay, well, that's good. Looks like most of these agenda items are yours for updating us.
Yeah, I can read through these quickly. As you know, from last month, the 2020 Vol. Local Transportation Funding Grant Application was denied. As you know, they had 10 times more in request that they had funds available, so it was extremely competitive. This is a project that we're doing jointly with Shrewsbury Borough. I just put it back on the agenda this month to let you know that Shrewsbury Borough voted to apply again.
Okay, good.
With us being a partner in that. So we had one meeting already to help evaluate if we can enhance the application, so we'll have that submitted by the end of July.
And we already voted to continue that, didn't we?
Correct. And next two items is just the stormwater basin, which will be done in conjunction with the municipal complex. Those bids, both of those, we anticipate having a recommendation next quarter, July 7th. That's all I had.
Okay. Questions from anybody on any of those? We moved to new business. I think the first thing is an application for payment. This was a substantial amount of money, so I guess that's why it's in front of us.
Yeah. This is for the actual Fox Callers.
It's sold.
This is what the contract was for when it went out for bid. The contract price was $21,000, sorry, $221,000. $54.45. That works all that completed. That was the nine sections that you saw placed on the pre-cas of Fox Callers, Rock Road, Law and Ball. And that included the train and so forth, and that portion of the projects that completed. Anything we're waiting for yet is paving and guide rails. Paving when we go to the house, guide rail ring on that side contract.
And how are we handling that with North Hope? Well, we're going to wait till we're all done?
I prefer to wait till the project's all done and just send one.
That makes sense. Yeah, I think that makes sense. So you need just right now approval basically to pay this.
Authorization to pay application number one, which is also the final two, probably on that court for the amount of $221,054.45.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions, discussion? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Five votes to the affirmative, so we have approved payment. We will have a I didn't see this, maybe I was missing in the packet, but we have a stormwater agreement for Southern York County?
Yeah, anyone else?
I've got, I've got a couple of them here.
Yeah, the stormwater maintenance agreement.
Their standard agreement.
Standard agreement.
Right.
And also for 17521 Sisquider Trail South, which is for Boyd. That's for a new home.
So we can handle those in one motion?
Correct.
Both of them, if the board so desires. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion and approve that.
Thank you. And we have a second. Motion and a second. Approve the two stormwater agreements. Any questions? We shall vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
I have votes to the affirmative, so we have approved the two stormwater operation and maintenance agreements. And we have, I believe, two trash waiver requests.
Correct. One is for 11790 Baltimore Street, which is one of James Getz's properties. That has been vacant for
Ever.
10-plus years on now. The other one is for 124 Hot Drive, which is owned now by Allison. I believe it was sold August of last year. It's been vacant even prior to that, so it's probably been about a good year and a half, at least that it's been vacant. So that's the two waiver requests for trash.
Make a motion to approve.
Both of them, right? Okay. I'll second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the two trash waiver requests. We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I have votes to the affirmative. Those two waivers for trash are approved. I guess, Steve, for the first time, I don't see any correspondence, so that's easy to take care of. Yes.
Can I bring up something? I'll do it in the business if I may.
Sure.
Tonight, we voted to move the sign ordinance amendments along to the Planning Commission. Is that correct, Todd?
No.
That's a standalone ordinance. It's not for, she doesn't send it to.
The motion.
The advertiser, so it's in its final form.
Right. Is that correct?
You reminded me tonight when you said that Gemcraft, who frequently violates your sign ordinance in the setback provision, is that correct?
Correct.
Paid another fine. They're repeat offenders on that, aren't they?
That's the first for Gemcraft. We have, Keystone has been a, Keystone has been a kind of repeat offender.
And the offense is that they continually put their signs in the right of way in violation of the zoning ordinance.
Sign, sign ordinance.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the sign ordinance.
Yeah.
But without concern for the fines.
Actually, what happens is when they get the first fine, you know, they owe usually $300 per sign. Repeat, and we'll usually double it, and usually about the third time they get fined, it's triple. It started out as when they stopped. So eventually they do stop. It just takes a couple of times.
My only point was, the purpose of fines is to deter violations of the ordinance. And it sounds to me like maybe the fines aren't at a level that's deterring it. But if they are increasing, and they get to the point where they quit, then your sign ordinance is the same way it should. Otherwise, you need to consider doubling it so that you get some attention.
I will say, the defense of Gemcraft, out of the larger building companies, when they got this first fine, they actually did call, they gave me a cell phone number of a person, 24 seven, with violations to let them know. I'm happy with that. It's a done that pass, so.
Sounds like the matter's taken care of.
But the solicitor is correct. You know, we don't like, we don't like to ask fines. Unfortunately, it's the only way that you get attention, and they have to be big enough that they get attention. So, yeah, everything you said is certainly right. All right, we have reached near the end of the meeting, so we have one more opportunity for public comment, if anyone is so inclined. Yes, ma'am? Come on up.
Okay, my name is Monica Houston.
Can you get really close to the microphone for us?
I live on 12015 McDonald Court in Glenrock, and this pertains to the group home. Since not all of you board members were on the 2019 decision where the zoning was not going through, I just thought I'd bring you up to date a little bit on the water availability, because we feel nothing has really changed to the water question, which is really important, especially since two new homes have been constructed since 2019 on Mr. Warwick's property. Mr. Warwick now own, has five homes on his property, plus a new home was constructed on adjacent Jessica Lane. That makes seven homes on Jessica Lane, plus a new home a little bit west on Sizlin Road is being constructed. So there are going to be basically, you know, one, two, three, four new homes since 2019 have added who need water on the north side of, on the south side of Sizlin Road. So we feel that a water, in-depth water study should be done before any decision is made. I don't know who is responsible for something like that.
Well, again, if I can comment, the decision on the ordinance would not have anything to do with whether or not the group home, if it were allowed, would comply. So that, again, is what we call site-specific. It would be addressed if and when the group home would come in for like the use permits and things like that. It wouldn't have any bearing on whether the ordinance itself was approved or not approved, because it wouldn't apply anyplace else in the township, only at that particular location where you could look at the specifics for water and sewer, and they all always have to be addressed.
Okay, well, that's very good. I just thought I'd
Sure.
Show you that more homes have gone.
Okay, no, we're glad to hear that. Anyone else would like to address the board at this time?
Every municipality meets on Wednesday night, but if that's all right, I could read a letter.
Yep, if you can give us your name.
Deborah Walker. I live on Sizlin Road. Yes. Do we have a copy?
We all have a copy.
Should I not read it?
Well, it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't make any sense to read it. We all have it. I will say we had very little time to look at it because it came in very late, so it's something we're probably going to have to look at, but I think we would rather read it ourselves in our own time.
Okay.
Study it and look at it, but we do all have a copy of it, yes.
Okay. I mean, I think.
Could you, I'm sorry, for the record, could you give your name and address, please?
I think I just did, but Deborah Walker, Sizlin Road. I think the paragraph that that's one, two, three, it's the fifth paragraph. "It appears that the township is continually being asked to amend its zoning ordinance simply to permit an expanded land use at the request of a single property owner, when under the current zoning ordinance, the property owner can develop the property as a group home with a limit of eight residents." I think that's, you know, that's not all that he says, but I think that's like
Well, actually.
The thing that I would emphasize.
Yeah, actually, we've only been asked once. We haven't really continually been asked. It's kind of the board's issue that it's been labored on, if you would, but I think that it's become bigger than just asking for this one specific site, if you would. It's become kind of looking at, let's look at our ordinance, and let's make sure that that ordinance is a good ordinance, an ordinance that complies with regulations, and that's kind of what we've been in the process of doing, if I'm using the right language.
Well, I would say that the impetus for the zoning change that was proposed, what, maybe two and a half years ago? That was at their request.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes, you're correct.
This is the second thing. And I would also say, because I've been doing a lot of reading about disability and, you know, group homes, and, I mean, it is, it's not, it's a mess. But I just found something interesting about the city of Denver. That's Denver, Colorado, not Pennsylvania. In February, they had a limit of two unlimited persons in a dwelling, a single-family dwelling. They upped it just to five, just to accommodate sober houses. So, I mean, you know, it's a large city, you know, it doesn't feel the need to expand to 20. That's all. I just thought that was interesting.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the board? Chad, come on up.
Chad Myers, Shrewsbury Township Planning Commission. I just, with regard to Chairman Rutledge's comments regarding the text amendment for the group home, I heard you allude to some information that's come to light since the last Planning Commission meeting two weeks ago.
That's a report from the solicitor, right?
I would just ask that any of that new information that has come to light be included to all of the Planning Commission when we are asked to consider this, so, thank you.
I think that goes without saying, for sure.
I just wanted to reiterate.
Okay.
Thank you. I mean, in full. I'm not asking for a synopsis from staff. I'm asking for his comments that you're referring to in full.
Right. Yep.
Your attorney has it.
Thank you. Wonderful. You hand it across the doorway. Thank you.
Not only does she have them, but she, I think, was involved basically in, with Tim Bup and putting those comments together, so they did have some conferencing and doing that.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have one request. The Planning Commission minutes for the December 2020 meeting are not on website. I just have one last, the planning commission minutes for the December 2020 meeting are not on the website.
I'll fill out a checkbook. They may not have a meeting.
No, you had a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
December 2020?
It was Christmas and my son was there, I remember.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir. As I said, the.
Can you?
Harvey Stephen Walker, Sidesland.
Yeah, can you come up to the?
Yes, sir.
It's just, it's very hard for our, I know you have a hard time, Walker, but it's, it's really hard for our secretary to hear if you're not at the microphone.
I appreciate that. Steve Walker, Sidesland Road. Uh, just a question, in fact, is that report that's going to be submitted to you and the, your planning commission, is that going to be made public or would our attorney have access to that before the meeting?
I'm going to defer that to our solicitor.
No, that's, uh, that's something between the board and your council. But I, you're the one that is represented by Attorney Schultes.
Yes, sir.
I spoke with Attorney Schultes today in IRA communication.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
He's a good fellow.
Well, I think that's everybody. I'll ask one more time. Has everybody spoken? All right, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Well, in favor? All right, we.